It's a little bit after nine o'clock. We've got a pretty cool agenda, so we're gonna open up our work session for May sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen at about four after nine. If everyone could please either silence or turn off their cellphones and then please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, can you share with us any delusions or ambitions, please?
Sure. I'll have my agenda on the phone. So, um, we have an emergency services grant request that you asked I have added to the agenda. Ginger's gonna give us an update on Terminal Six important, and a room superintendent needs to chat with us about a potential road vacation request.
Okay. Well, our meeting will start with our time guide. Mr. Todd Forbes from BLM is here to talk to us about the Highway Wells. Welcome morning, Todd.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning.
Jim, are you familiar with Highway Wells?
I'm not.
It's a rest stop between here on three ninety-five going toward Aquila Lake.
Well, thank you.
On BLM Madison Park.
Well, I think I do know.
Mr. Proffin.
Gotcha.
Public comment.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come down and talk to you this morning. So, the subject before us is the Highway Well rest stop. I got a couple of handouts here. Looking at the first page, so part of what facilitated our discussion this morning is BLM about a year and a half, two years ago, came up with a new national recreation strategy. And that strategy significantly changed kind of the way BLM looks at its recreation sites. And so, just to kind of put it in a nutshell, BLM for a long time had kind of a build it and they will come mentality. You know, somebody thought, hey, it's a great spot for a campground over here, we're gonna build a campground, and people start using it. And what they found out over time is that doesn't always happen. And so, there's a huge shift in BLM, moving from a build it and they will come type of mentality to more of a partnership, local community support type mentality. And so, that shift comes over as we wanna, we wanna partner with the community, we wanna look at the places the community is using, or would like to use, the types of facilities that we'd like to have, and then we'd like to focus our limited budget and energy on developing those things that the community sees as important. So, I think that's a very positive shift.
Can you expand on your research of work community?
So, community, they, it is twofold, so that's a good, great question. One of it is, looks at visitation of the local area from outside. So, what kind of things would draw recreation to this area from the outside? The other part of it is, what kind of facilities do local community members want to use within their community? And so, it is two-pronged. But the new strategy places a lot of emphasis on local support for both sides, both drawing from the outside and local community recreation. So, it's kind of a two-pronged approach. The other thing that the national rec strategy asked us all to do was take a look at all those rec sites we have, kind of determine, are we getting, for the amount of money that we're investing in those existing recreation sites, are we getting a good return on our investment? In other words, are those sites being used by the recreational public? If they're not, we probably should consider decommissioning those. We also wanted to look at sites that may not necessarily be supported by the local community. We also wanted to look at sites similar to Highway Well and kind of say, okay, so what do we get for the recreation dollar that we spend on these sites? Just a couple of examples, I know the Coos Bay District had a large campground they developed that got very little use. It was at something like ten percent capacity throughout most of the year, and they decided that the money that they were spending to maintain that site wasn't worth the use they were seeing. And so...
I like those sites without being over crowded.
A lot of folks do. So, those are the kind of decisions that BLM has to kind of weigh. And so, the reason I'm here to talk to you today is, you know, this, the Highway Well rest stop essentially is just exactly that, it's a highway rest stop. And we don't feel like we get a lot of recreation use out of it for the funding that we put into it. And that, that doesn't mean that we wanna close the doors and walk away. We see great value in that site. Everybody that we've had a discussion with, everybody that we've talked to sees the need to have that site there. The reason I'm here today is just to kind of let you guys know that we're kind of embarking on this journey to start a discussion with the Highway Department of Oregon Department of Transportation, with you guys, with any other interested parties, to, I guess, kind of see what options there are for the proper entities to kind of take over that facility. We've had a lot of issues with that facility over the years, so just to kind of give you some history, on the last few pages, there's, there's photographs of the site, there's a couple Google images of the site from above, if you kind of, if you're not familiar with the site, you kind of have an idea of what it looks like. The original site that was there was at the same location, but there were different porpoies, not porpoies, but different outhouses. I think the site was pretty much undeveloped. So, prior to the nineteen eighties, that site was managed by ODOT, it was kind of an informal highway rest stop. So, at some point in the mid to late nineteen eighties, the BLM entered into a partnership with ODOT to spruce up the site, a new, two new current toilets were added, there was a lot of landscaping done, there was some interpretation of the surrounding geology and that kind of stuff added to the site at that time. So, at that point in time, BLM and ODOT entered into an agreement where ODOT contributed six thousand dollars a year to the maintenance of the site, and they agreed to plow snow out of the parking lot. Through our research over the last two, three years, we realized that agreement expired in nineteen ninety-eight, so we've had no existing agreement with ODOT since nineteen ninety-eight.
Why did you not tell them?
They, they know, they're aware. They still contribute the same amount of money, six thousand dollars a year, which has the value of purchasing, you know, purchasing value of six thousand dollars is greatly reduced since the mid nineteen eighties. And they still plow snow out of the site. Just by our estimate, since two thousand and eight, we've put a lot of money into the site. The existing kiosk that was there was pretty dilapidated, and so we purchased two new kiosks and put up, it had a wooden shade structure picnic table, we purchased a large, more updated shade structure at the site. We've done a significant amount of maintenance over the last few years. So, our annual cost, in two thousand and fifteen, we spent about thirty-nine thousand dollars just in basic maintenance of the site. That doesn't include the new kiosks and any of that kind of stuff we put up, that's just somebody to drive from Lakeview three times a week to clean, do all the basic maintenance that's required at the site, change light bulbs, all that kind of stuff. In two thousand and sixteen, that was thirty-five thousand.
And you guys maintained the water system also?
We maintained the water system. The water system is something that is incredibly difficult to maintain because of the amount of use there, we only have to do water quality testing quarterly, if there was more use it'd have to be monthly. The biggest issue with the water system is that water system is split between livestock producers on one side and Highway Well on the other side. And so, the livestock producers are using it at an early time of year, I believe they start late February or March. Occasionally, somebody accidentally turns the wrong valve on in February, and water goes into the Highway Well side, and then promptly freezes and breaks pipes. And so, we've had a lot of growing pains over the years with folks that aren't knowledgeable about the system, turning the system on and off.
So, Todd, just as a question...
Absolutely.
Is there not a way to lock that valve?
Uh, not really, because the way, the way the valving piping is set up, the livestock producers have to get in and access the same site. I think we've got all that worked out, that's really just a training thing, kind of a side note. That's really not the issue. The real issue is the, the distance from Lakeview, the amount of money we spend at that site. You know, like I said earlier, we don't wanna lock the site and go away, we just really want to kind of bring everybody to the table and enter into a conversation. We've had one conversation with ODOT. We were informed at that meeting that ODOT's not interested in taking on any additional Highway Well, Highway Rest Stops, but they do acknowledge the importance of that site. So, we're in a little bit of a difficult situation. We've got ODOT that really doesn't wanna take on any kind of responsibility for it. We have no way of doing any, our options basically are to close the doors and walk away, and I really am trying to avoid that.
So, my, my question is gonna be, and you've pretty much answered it there, as far as to say, Highway Department, if you take this over as a Highway Department rest area versus, well, you take over the maintenance, so we don't have to drive all the way from Lakeview and we'll compensate for it.
Especially, especially since there's a Highway Department...
Right, down the road.
Nine miles down the road from the site. They, they did offer, they said they thought they might be able to find us a little bit more money, but I don't know that a little bit more money is really gonna help our situation. So, kind of the way we're looking at it is, this, you know, we, we actually spend more money maintaining this site, more BLM funds than we do at our largest rec site, the Christmas Valley Sand Dunes. We, you know, we get outside grants for Christmas Valley Sand Dunes, but we, we're putting more money into Highway Well, more BLM money, than we are Christmas Valley Sand Dunes, and there's something wrong with that, I agree with you. We should be putting more money into these rec sites that the public is getting more use out of it.
And most of the money is going in, I think, to the majority, but mostly it's transportation and labor costs of the distance.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's not, it's also, you know, it would be different if that rest stop was kind of on the way to some of our other rec sites, you know, stop for a couple hours to clean it when you're underway somewhere else, but it's really not. You know, we split our, we split our recreation routes, we have the stuff out in Warner Valley, Sunstone, Harbar, and then we have the stuff way up in the north in northern Christmas Valley. And so, Highway Well kind of is this, there's no man's land out in the middle where it's a long ways from any of those other rec sites. And so, it really is just kind of a dead end, you, you go, you clean Highway Well and you come back, you know, on certain days, you basically through Warner Valley and clean it, but it is a long way from any of those.
So, I'll ask again, is the state not interested in contracting to do that?
They didn't seem to have any interest at our first meeting. At that first meeting, when they didn't seem to have any interest, I said, well, you know, we, we kind of wanna get some other opinions on this, and so, we decided to take the issue to our Resource Advisory Council. And that's the second sheet in your handout, we, we did a presentation for the Resource Advisory Council, and we got this letter back from them. They seemed supportive of essentially trying to get everybody at the table, they acknowledged that, you know, the, with the funds that we're investing, it really doesn't need a recreation
So, I, I believe it is a partnership, absolutely, I can help foster some on the ODOT site, I'm at POG. When you go there, you think of a rest area, you don't think of a recreation site, you think of it as a highway thing. Thinking outside the box, there, there is the whole water system outside of the rest area that you guys need to maintain and take care of. My opinion, I'd like to see that used a little bit more for wildlife than just for livestock. And so, I, I think there's some real beneficial, benefits that aren't being done out there by the BLM that can be beneficial from sage grouse to AMLO to wildlife. So, I think there's more than just the rest area there, that BLM needs to be at the table, that it'd be doubling over if you camp some of it out there. Have you thought about thinking outside the box, where that it's not just a rest area, where that maybe there's half a dozen campsites there to try to attract more recreation there? I know you guys are getting away from build it and they will come, but this is, I see it as a partnership with ODOT. The BLM, there's, depends on what kind of recreation you're looking at. If you're looking at going to the sand dunes and riding your four wheeler, great, but there's another contention of us, like Commissioner Kestner says, that sort of wanna get away, so that's sort of the rest area to get to, Georgia, get out there to some of the other parts of the country where you can get away from people. But I, I would sure hate to see BLM not stay at the table with this, because I think it's a partnership, I think it's pushing ODOT up to another level. Like you say, their, their maintenance shop is right there. They, they wouldn't be given the six thousand dollars a year without a contract unless it's a good deal for them. So, I, I think we bring the right people to the table, I think that it could build a good partnership. But, that partnership, BLM sort of needs to know what, how much they can contribute financially or through, through actual labor or, or work time, so it's a key part of three ninety, three ninety-five that are, it's a huge, it's really important to keep this, this going to some level.
Yeah, I agree.
And I guess that's kind of my ask of you, is to, I guess, one, I'd like to hear your opinions on what you think about how this fits into our national rec strategy, and then also to try to leverage that partnership, I would like you guys to kind of be at the table, if that's possible. You know, I guess we haven't, to kind of answer your first question, I guess we haven't really considered a campground. You know, I don't, I don't know offhand how much campground use we would get right at a rest stop like that, but maybe there is some kind of possibility there.
You know, I think it'd be seasonal for the hunters, but it might become a place for the passers-through, not necessarily on a recreation site, but just for travelers that are, are going through there.
Just overnighting.
Yeah, overnight.
So, this discussion is very timely too, because right now, we're in the process of a jurisdictional transfer on Highway three ninety-five. Essentially, the way Highway three ninety-five is now, the Highway Department, ODOT, has a right-of-way with BLM for the highway. The way a jurisdictional transfer works is, the land within the right-of-way is actually transferred out of BLM and into Federal Highways Department. And so, we're getting, going through that process for the highway now, and so, if, if ODOT were willing to take on responsibility with a little bit of BLM financial input, it would be very appropriate this time to include Highway Well in that transfer.
You bring up a good point, I was gonna ask about, it's a U.S. transportation highway, can that agency contribute, or have it?
You know, that's a good question, I don't, I don't know.
Well, let's go back to what Commissioner Winter said, he, you know, the area Commissioner on Transportation shared, I think he has so many roads and discussions beyond the apply, like folks, that might bear for you.
Yeah, when we met, sorry, I didn't bring, didn't bring, I can't remember the gentleman's name, that was the, the regional supervisor for ODOT that works up on Falls.
Regional or area, was it?
Might have been area.
Jared Johnson or Mike Stinson?
Jerry sounds familiar.
Jared Johnson.
I believe so. I can let that happen.
I'm sort of surprised he didn't get ahold of me, or his, but anyways, that's where I'd start first.
Okay.
And then Bob Ryan is the regional manager, but I have good relationships with all of them.
That'd be great.
So, let's, let's pull the players together, Todd.
Investigate the U.S. transportation.
I will, yeah, absolutely.
Can remind your counterparts, you'll remind them, it's a long ways from Valley Falls to Riley, and I think they don't want their whole highway system to become a rest area.
Yeah, oh, that's, that's exactly right. I mean, that area is kept, because there is a rest area, it can't wait, it's kept fairly clean, in most parts.
Yeah, we did, so, so, one thing I do wanna note, we did have to shut down and lock the doors this spring, that was totally unrelated, the water levels in that valley got so high that it came through the tops of the vaults and flooded the vaults. We had the vaults pumped and they immediately filled up again, and we had a mess inside the, so we had to shut down for health and sanitation reasons for a while, but once the water levels dropped, we were able to get it cleaned out.
You have that theory pretty well.
Well done. But also, tapping what Brad mentioned earlier about law like, now the livestock users use it for livestock and assume they have a trough or something out there, is that law like friendly, or assume it is?
Yeah, pretty much all of our troughs are around wildlife friendly, but I think there are some opportunities to, I know in years past in Pottery Basin, we had an agreement with Oregon Fish and Wildlife to provide wildlife water there through some of the same wells in that whole system. But unfortunately, OEFW didn't have enough funding to continue that partnership, so it's kind of fallen by the wayside, but that's something I can approach them with, again, there's, there's several wells in that valley, not just that Highway Well.
There is, and is, all three of us have worked on sage grouse issues, and my, there is water, there's life, and we have a system out there that could be, could complement some of our issues out there. So, after the meeting that I get with you and set up, and I think Oregon Fish and Wildlife is a potential player also, ODOT, ourselves, maybe even some of the nonprofits or whatever, but we need to brainstorm, try to pull the, all the people together that we can, or maybe just keep people first and then bring the other ones in.
In your discussions, I'd really love to have you visit with Jared Dormine on behalf of BLM about the folks down the road in Alphalike, maybe being able to...
Yeah.
...take the time out of their busy schedules to drive it down there and keep it maintained so you don't have to make special trips.
Yeah.
John, John, please.
And I think there was, when we, when we met with ODOT the first time, I mean, I think they did, they did mention the possibility of contracting, but they were very reluctant to take on that responsibility.
Tell them you got six thousand dollars to do the job.
That's right.
Go write on the check, see if you get yours.
That's right. So, I, I think it would be a great discussion, and I would appreciate any assistance you can give us, so.
Let's do that.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Todd. Appreciate it.
The board okay with me?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
I do encounter a lot of people from other parts of the country there, and they very appreciative, because coming across, they said, this open area of nothing scales, scares us, and they need that place to stop ants. And my dog, when I drive with my dog, he needs to stop something.
You have your regular item on here plus your additions.
Next time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanna take care of the rest area.
Yeah.
Okay. Even with his description of water level.
I wondered why you were laying on the floor.
So, first item is discussion that we had at the road advisory meeting pertaining to the cost of dust control, dust palate is moving forward and reduce revenue from the road department. Brainstorming ideas on how, or what process we would take to make this dust control a landowner cost, where the road department would manage the application of it and line all that up scheduling-wise, but the material cost would be for the landowner that had that dust control issue. Road advisory notes are here on the back, which you guys were all at, but in addition, I, I have a call-in to Earthvine, which is the Empire Road, Earthvine is the material that we, Lake County Road Department used in the past. And just going off the last year's numbers, there was twenty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars spent on dust control. So, it's three dollars and eighty-seven cents a gallon, and I, I have a call-in to them, although they haven't returned my call, to kind of study more application rates and...
Is it three eighty-seven a gallon?
That's what it was last year.
More than unleaded fuel.
And the road department bought seven thousand, you might as well say plus or minus, it was just a couple over seven thousand gallons. In costing, of what things cost in trade, that's about two miles of seal cope to reserve our road assets that we already have invested, so that's one of the items to kind of ask or see what direction we're going. So, we talked about a little bit yesterday or the day, but yeah, yesterday, yesterday was one of your, you know, for, for the discussion, I don't know that we have this, we have this on the agenda for tomorrow. You know, the road advisory discussion was a good discussion, and the notes bear what was said there this time, a year ago, we also had discussion on it, but it, it's more of a policy, so the board, you know, we're not to develop a policy on this. I've got a couple of questions on our notes, I think Commissioner Winters said, it says in there that you would be the only person to determine if the dust is a true and actual safety issue if it arises, so I guess for clarification, we need to decide, will there be dust oil abatement that's done for safety reasons and no one in Central County bears the cause versus somebody that just feels like they're annoyed by the dust drift in the dry part of the summer out to their place wherever it might be? So, just, so we clarify what we're talking about.
Yeah, kind of right, you mentioned that there in the road advisory, as far as safety is for the safety of travelers on the road, not talking safety of dust going to a house or something like that, but to clarify, Kevin's a road official that would make that determination if it becomes a safety issue for, for travelers.
Versus somebody's personal preference to not get dusted hypothetically in their house. I think that concern would have to be handled just like anybody else's concern of coming for sight distance at an intersection or anything like that, they call in to have a concern that, I can't see because the dust is enough, and we don't see if that was the case. Yeah. So, if we have a policy that says we are, we're willing to do this, that landowners cost for material, we'll apply it, we're not making a determination it's a safety issue, we're just saying that we're gonna do it and we're gonna bear the cost of the material, then beyond that, you'll evaluate safety areas given the end of the study, I would say.
Is that a motion?
What?
The policy you just put together.
Sounds real good.
But basically, you're in charge of safety issues. What we're talking about here is nuisance.
That, that's what I see it as. And you guys all know that I didn't grow up here, and where I came from, we had very similar things that took place, but never was it the county or the township's cost, it was always landowner. And on a long stretch of road, those landowners either got together and said, hey, we want this whole stretch done, and it was to boot on the cost of the material, which is what my family farmer I grew up in did, we had several miles of chip done from the township because of that same dust control, but it was a landowner cost, it was not a, it was not the main agency.
We would have been the same scenario on that farm, if landowners took care of it.
Is that something you could put together, very short form, a little policy statement? Sure, yeah, I can work on that, then he sends me the verbiage of what you just said, I can go.
You catch it on the go.
Something to that.
Now, keep it free.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, the, the main objective here is not to, you know, keep things or not, we just wanna conserve where we can, and this is one of the areas where I think that's, that's a large amount of money for what we get out of it.
Well, what we really need to definitely say is, we're going into reserves this year just for, just trying to do a preservation of what assets we have. No longer are we able to do these type of things.
This is, this is more like a fringe that we can't... And the few landowners that have been present at our road advisory meetings understand that, they're more than willing to pay for the materials, so it's not an issue, it's just a matter of getting it down to policy, this is what we do.
There's a, there's two costs to it, one is the material, the other is the time later.
Well, yeah, there's time, I mean, there's time in scheduling it, there's time in all of that, so, yes, that's... Okay.
Okay.
Second, second item, I'll, I'll get that and I guess I'll bring it back to another work session.
I would, if you're able to pull it together, bring it back, we can act on it tomorrow, I think the sooner we act on it, the better.
Are you talking about the proposed vacation?
The, the, the policy. The road advisory.
Is that something you want to try and accomplish?
Yeah, well, I can try, but I won't be, I'm not going to be able to be here tomorrow because of.
Denise is writing it as we speak, aren't we?
It's not really an issue of today.
No, I, I just wanted to talk about it upfront so that it was in, you know, out in the open, this is, because people are going to start calling.
Let's get it as soon as we can.
Yep. The added item here was a letter that was sent to the road department by the Huffords, Jesse Huffer on Soto Lane in Fort Rock. I actually talked to him one day that I was up there on the road review and they had a lot of concerns. You guys all have the letter in probably there. Kind of in the middle towards the bottom of the first page, safety concerns, number three being one of their sticking points. Safety from that field, tools, equipment and so forth, he's found several people in his blocks around the barns and different things. What he expressed to me was from that concern, their reason for wanting to vacate the road or have us vacate the road, I should say, is they own both sides of the road and there's no through, there's no through way, there's no through traffic. So from the road department standpoint, it would benefit us.
Is that the only residence on that road?
Yeah, they own, they own both sides all the way around and at the dead end, it's, it's their private also, so.
So from full length of what they want to be on?
Yeah, and I brought this here first, but we can go to the planning and ensure that that's the case. You know, that's a landowner's word at this point, tell them that, so. But from road department standpoint, future maintenance on this road, it's there basically, it's their driveway, so if they want to maintain it. And we gain no access from either hauling material through there or however, then it's kind of an easy decision.
But it's a dead end road, what portion does the county have for it?
Now, we just maintain it, yeah, we just, we just maintain and this is, and they also are on the list of folks that want dust out every year, so.
To tell us of renovations?
Well, they, yeah, I mean, the majority of their traffic, they, his, his words to me was he can choke down his own dust, but there's a lot of people that drive back and forth there. And they get to the end of the road and they have to turn around because there's no, there's no throughway, you know, it's not a throughway.
And if we vacate it, then it would become a private road or a public road, private road, I assume.
It'd be private.
And you can post a private road.
I guess I'm asking the town at the same time, I would assume it's private because he owns both sides of it, so through planning or however, our roadway there would not, we would lose that.
Yeah, as we go through a process where this doesn't connect, at least where you tell us I have researched it. When we go through a hiring process and vacate a road, it's usually given to each landowner on each side, this case it'd be one landowner and I mean, my understanding it'd become private.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to start through the process and see what we find.
Well, currently, there are dead end signs up, you know, entering this section of roadway, but it doesn't seem to, I can see their corner, you know, and they, they own the whole stretch there.
Yep, very good.
Okay.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Valting?
Yeah, David, I'm sure.
We're back.
I know you've got several others, so.
Stack paper.
Okay, state sponsorship agreement is the first item.
Okay, yep, we got a state sponsorship agreement for our pavement management program at the airport. And there'll be signatures from the sponsor and that, in their emails, that would be Dave who will be signing that, but it also asked for the sponsor's attorney signature on this. State sponsorship agreement. And that allows us to go ahead with the two following agreements here, is my understanding, so that's really what all this, the state sponsor just needs is just a, a reference from, from Dave and then to our county attorney.
Okay.
Is there questions on that?
You've communicated with the town until you go to council already?
I have not, no, no, they're just bringing this to you. Let you guys know that that'll be sent to.
Next time.
Yep.
Yeah, because it's on the agenda for tomorrow for action, so.
And then we have two pavement management programs going right now, one for Paisley and one for Lakeview Airport, Lake County Airport. The Lake County Airport actually, because it's federally funded, is going to fall into a category where we're not going to have any match for the county. They're going to, the money's been donated and the state is going to accept federal funds to make up our match portion of about 24, almost 2,500 dollars.
That's not Paisley?
That's, no, that's for.
For Lake County.
Yeah. So that one there is all taken care of. Paisley is, is a much larger project this time, they're estimating 148,487.92 is the maintenance cost.
What was the name again?
And because that is not federally funded, we have a 5% match that, that we're, the state is requiring us to take care of, which is 7,424.40. That's been, when I called them, they said this stuff has been taken care of in the past by, by donation, but this year there, there is no donation available, so the county is going to be responsible for that.
Why don't we, you know, I don't know the use out there specifically, but why don't we just reach out to the ZX?
And Simpaw's been a partner.
Yeah, great partner. Mark Williams, he's the manager of the ranch there and he's talked to us before, you know, we haven't done anything recently about helping out, you know, with what expenses are. But that kind of investment, I think they could probably see that, I don't want to speak for them, but they, they are a willing partner. I don't know how much aircraft still flies in and I know Ronnie's back there, she used to know that they flew in there all the time, but. And then what about our partners with the federal agencies that use that exclusively during fire season for a small amount of money?
Yeah.
In a match, why don't we reach out to communicate with their, see if they have got a few funds that they.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and I need to touch base with them, they know on our, on our connect program and the pavement is getting replaced anyhow, so we'll try to make that all one meeting.
Yeah, those kind of repairs, wow, make that airport a lot nicer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, apparently there's, I think what they're talking about more than anything is the parking area, because it's older, it's a little more broken down, so. It's got to be a little bit more with crack seal, because the runway's still in fairly decent shape, so. They don't give a description of where each thing's going to be yet, but.
That's not inclusive of crack seal and or chip seal and the whole thing, that, what, what exactly on Paisley is this going to be, you don't know for sure for 140,000 thousand?
Well, it will be the crack seal and then it may be a full slurry seal as well, because they were talking about that, but I have not seen the funnel on that.
I think it's 2002 whenever we took that over from the state, the ZX, Simpaw, they're, Simpaw is a great partner, we had an agreement for many years and then. They, they decided that they would, when we had projects come forward, that they would be at the table.
Yeah.
And so I think that's a good thing, but it, it should be due, I mean, we're talking that's 15 years ago, if the needs are.
Needs are good, see what we have, yeah, yeah, so, so we'll have to take care of that there, get that, get our process taken care of here.
So before we sign anything, why don't we make sure we know exactly what is the going to do?
Okay, yep, and all we can see is, I mean, this was kind of, we just ended up getting this information just a few days ago, so. Something that was just emailed to us, so we can just bring it to you and then, yeah, we'll get, we'll get the plan all in motion for that.
So you want to hold off on that until tomorrow, Commissioner?
Well, unless, if, you know, we got this schedule, let's just, let's just firm it up.
Okay.
Make sure we.
We got, give me a chance to get ahold of ZX and see, see who's.
Yes, Mark Williams, Mark Williams is out there.
Can I sure see if that 5% match is, is our dollars or if there's some kind of prep or in kind work that can be done out there?
Okay, yeah.
A lot of times on some of this, you know, labor and prep work can be, you know, might be an option, I don't know how it can be prepped out there if it's room in it or whatever, before they chip seal it.
So, so will we be going on for a discussion tomorrow or do you need time to gather more information?
Uh, we're going to need more time.
Bring it back to you on the next, or next.
Well, is it just a Paisley?
Just a Paisley.
Yeah, and it says on here slurry seal type one, 73,000, 74,000, but the number that jumps out at me, I don't, I don't know who's doing this, but. $40,000 for engineering to do maintenance?
For a slurry seal.
And that will? Yeah.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Well, I'd be assumed up at WH specific probably, I don't know.
No, that is. I'm drawing a blank on the name, but it, it is a, a different engineering company, Century West is the one that's actually doing it for the state, so.
That's, that 148,000, is that all state money or federal money passed through the state?
As I'm saying, that's state money, that is our state money, yeah.
And OD or the Department of A B?
Well, I'll try to get some answers on this, but the Lakeview or Lake County, and the, the agreement with the state sponsorship, we can still move forward on, assuming because they're taking care of. One has to be signed for the other to be.
Yeah, it says these funds are coming out of the statewide airport pavement maintenance program.
I would think we could act on it. Just out of what, whether you could match from.
For the Lake County.
What the?
No, for the Paisley.
For the Paisley, yeah. Don't think we can turn down the ground.
No.
No, if it's getting to that point where it's needing that kind of maintenance, it's pretty important that it gets done, I think, but.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we leave it on along with the Lake, the, our, our Lakeview Airport for tomorrow and if we run into some kind of bug, we'll, we'll hold off. But if we can take action, don't remind us, we don't need the exact details of the match, we'll do that, so we can start moving along.
Okay.
Okay.
And I did talk with Ann about this, so when she gets back, we're going to sit down and also see what we can do in this coming year's budget as well. This came in after we gave, gave our proposed budget, so she said until 2/30 if we have, so, so we're going to see if we can't juggle things around a little bit and see.
Before we adopt the budget and can we change it?
Yeah.
So thank you for scheduling for the draft on the 21st.
On 21st, okay, so just before.
We've talked about maybe needing to move that to the 28th, but right now it's the 21st.
Okay, all right, so.
And also on that, the interest is to get that project down this coming fiscal year.
Right, it'll be 2017.
Is the option going till 2018?
So 2017, but I'm looking to see if there's an actual, remember if there was a date. Normally what it's been is August, September, right in that areas where we're doing our payments, so that is probably when we're going to end up getting that done.
Well, my question is, we can do it this coming August, September, but we need to budget, you know, current budget for this.
Yes.
And if budget is tight, is this project can carry guarantee the funding for doing the following year? Well, I thought you might have other options.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how far we can carry that out, so.
Let's see how our match starts looking.
We're just going to borrow your checkbook.
I don't use a checkbook anymore, I use the bank cards.
Okay, you'll get shut out.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Are you going to stick around as Dave starts saying? He's sticking around.
He and Pete go, Dave and Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, airport management agreement, we had it every, well, it's due for our manager at the airport, not a whole lot has changed with the agreement, there's a few things, of course. We, we did have a two-year agreement, we're going to, we're talking to Tom and we feel that four years would be a better option for the term of his agreement. For renewal every four years instead of two years. Under section one D. Any questions on that?
On the agreement in general?
Just four year. We're going to leave his compensation per month the same, we're not really going to adjust with that or mess with that. And Tom, if you have any questions, I think please ask as I'm going along.
Yeah.
I have a question on the compensation that comes out to 70,000 a year, when we negotiated, you were talking about 70,000 and then as you get your private business and we, we narrow it down. Some, do you recall that discussion?
No, in fact, I looked through my notes because that was bugged, I believe, before and I do not have my original notes there.
I've been asked the same thing, Tom, and I have remembered that discussion.
And the 70,000 dollars per year would not be out of general fund?
No.
As the revenue that the airport generates.
Right now, the airport is operating for itself, it's maintaining itself, this year, the last two years, we have had to take all of that general fund to fund that airport. I think trajectory, where we're headed with the airport operations and the funding is in a positive direction, we've never been able to do what we're doing now. With the planning that's going on towards the future, it's all looking to get better, whether it's through agreements or through access by other entities, through business that you bring in personally and let that best for deal sales. The list kind of goes on and on, so I think we.
So this is looking at four years, you've been there four years now?
Correct.
Four years, so this, the eight years have the same cost, which is truly the savings that the county, because there's no escalation factor in there. So for four years, four years ago, you started at this amount, eight years later, it's going to be the same, no cost living, no any other escalator. So to answer the question, is it reduced, technically, yes, it's less money than what just doing average increases are, so. So that, that's a positive for us at the county is you take that amount and you add percentage, say 2% a year, then it goes up pretty fast, so.
So what is written is that the county will compensate 70,000 a year and currently that money comes from airport operating renters, hanger renter.
Fuel sales.
Fuel sales, so forth. So, within four years, if you go with a four-year contract, if that revenue can come happen to taper down, then the county will still be obligated out of general fund to back, back fuel, is that correct?
I would think yes, I mean, where we, where we have to go if...
It just says that we compensate seventy thousand a year, and airport operations does not generate seventy, and we're still obligated seventy out of some fund.
Right, yes. We got to help say anything.
There, there would have to be a transfer from general fund. The last time we done that, we've done that over the years, it was a loan, and looking through the budget book and the following budget book, that loan has been paid off over the years. So, yeah, we would, if, if, if fuel cells go way down and everything goes flat out there, we get another recession or whatever, there is potential throughout the next four years to have to do a transfer from general fund. If, if that arises, then I'm not sure what there is to renegotiate, renegotiate this or get out of the lease, but everything would be on the table if that...
Yeah, well, there's, there's a section on all that.
Yes, you're exactly right, Commissioner. We've been there, done that, but...
So, if we re-look at the compensation just a little bit, compensation would be up to seventy thousand dollars based on income at the airport?
I, I...
Not just being for sixty thousand.
I'm not gonna say anymore.
But we, we need to be...
Jimmy always has a camera going.
Well, I think the last two years have shown that, you know, our, our ability to keep it out of general fund is, is positive for us too, because, uh, obviously it gives us incentive to make things grow, um, you know, from both sides, so, um, and I think with the projects that are coming up and what, what we have going with the business out there, we're gonna see even more growth, it's gonna improve everything we're doing, so.
Good job out there.
Yes, just when people fly in for the annuals, make sure they come in on empty, go out on full.
Full, full, yeah.
Okay, Dave, go ahead. Uh, then, uh, the, uh, office ran in main hangar building, uh, we, uh, we put in the agreement, well, back four years ago, and Tom, for starters, about Lake County Aviation will pay real property taxes for the next four years or, or, in fact, well, under O, under O R S three oh seven one twelve, real property is taxed exempt from, uh, a hangar business, unless it's over. I don't know all of it, but it's like, if the business doesn't make over three hundred thousand dollars, or it brings in three hundred thousand dollars, it's exempt from taxes.
So it's less than three hundred thousand?
Yes, less than.
We're looking forward for you to get past that mark, that means everybody's doing good, and then taxes won't be that bad.
So, so I pulled that out of the agreement, it's basically bogus, or, or we can't do that, it's illegal, our assets are companies, so, uh...
Thanks for researching that.
Uh, under, and the changes I made, under section, uh, oh, goodness, they're looking here. Under section five nineteen... Before you zip clear to there, Dave, can we go to five five? I believe, I'm not a airport person, but twenty-two S, is that Paisley?
Clearing water, rolling tax recognition, twenty-four on fifty-three.
It's just before twenty-two T, just before that.
Yeah, that's twenty-two S Paisley.
Twenty-two S is Paisley, yes.
Can we put Paisley in there?
Yeah.
Just twenty-two S slash Paisley, just so we know which airport we're on, that. So section nineteen on five nineteen, it used to, used to be in there, the, uh, advisory board would make any, or, cause there's three things in there about the advisory, but we haven't had an advisory, so I took that out and put Lake County Board of Commissioners, we'll appoint, and Airport Advisory Board if needed, uh, on our, we already have a master plan, uh, M A P for, uh, the airport, so there's really no, when we go to make do these big projects, there's really no, it's already been approved, there's no advisory there, so, uh, it works out better, but if we, if we go outside of that master plan, that's when we bring in a board of, or advisory committee or board or whatever, but right now we have the master plan, it's already been approved, and that's what we're focused on, so we don't need an advisory for our master plan that's already been approved.
So, so just, just, just thoughts, um, and you're late, I probably should not interrupt you, but, and so that if needed, as needed, verbiage?
It's not, because the work is not really needed.
Yeah, as needed, because of, you know, the master plan's there, but sometimes if there's something special goes on out there, the ladies on, or Davey might, or Tom might say, you know, commissioners would like to bring advisory board together, give a little bit of direction, as needed, I...
That was the essence of nineteen, I'm sure Dave can make that, we'll change correction, but...
Yeah.
Minister of Assistant, do you have a pencil or pen after Mark? Thank you. Hang on to your pencil. I've got a couple of questions.
I'm sorry to interrupt you there.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
So, I jumped, and I think that Dave jumped, and then...
Dave and I have chatted about this before, but there's no, there's no point in having, because of the quality plans that we have and the ongoing projects, an airport advisory board just to have one, but we needed to note in our contract that if we need one or as we need one, we will appoint one.
And we should have a criteria of what the membership of that would be.
Okay. And we'll do that in the advisory board requirements.
We have a policy on employing the boards, and look at Denise, because she keeps our boards accurate, so we might need to look at that, and, but, yeah, the criteria, as needed, I, I agree with you, Ken, and Ann, is that we wanna bring the, and it might depend on what kind of projects we're pulling in for the other four, might be labors and might be pilots, and it might be contractors, you know, you know?
So, on advisory board, we don't need, I agree, we don't need one just to have one, and we got the master plan and all that, but I think periodically to pull them together some folks for general review of how things working, and anything that may be outside the master plan that could be enhancements, and it's always nice to give public input, just where I'm coming from. So I don't, I wouldn't see a problem with calling the passion hurt, at high lead, once there are two years, just to review the master plan and so forth, see how things working.
And just the improvements on the airport as well, I can see.
So, Mark, on this date, two years from now, and you can give me a call at my house or on the cell phone, tell me that you're doing it, okay?
Or any other time that you see us needed.
So, Dave, I wanna go back to, it's under five, but I, I'm not looking at the items specifically that they refer to, things to do with promoting and, and finding grants, et cetera, so starting with five nine, five ten, five twelve, uh, and then going over the six under, in the second paragraph, what I'd like to propose for Tom, you know, because we, we kind of, you have income and we have certain things going on, but within the premise of that section, you might say, I'd like to see at least every six months, just an update on how we're doing with promoting the airport, you know, just have some discussion, maybe we'll have some brainstorming and so forth, that'll address, I think, that section in general, or those, those different items, because it's mentioned two or three different times in different places, so.
And when we're pushing our agreement with, you know, why, how emphasis was promotion, because that might be what we do then.
Correct. Yeah, well, yeah, we...
Well, we know you do a lot of it, but we don't always, you know, from a public standpoint, so we can get it reported, Jimmy can get it on the phone, report on it, you know, I think it'd be a good opportunity for you to be able to share what you are doing anyway, so, yeah.
Do you have a website?
We just, no, we don't, our personal business doesn't, but the, the airport uses the county website.
Is it maintained, updated?
It's updated with the fuel, yeah. How the fuel changes, they're not changing, other contact, if permission stays the same, so, we do advertise in, in the, uh, in the magazine, The Search and Rescue, that covers all of western states.
That's The Search and Rescue, there's, there's another magazine that's highly used by individual pilots, which one is that?
Well, there's a lot of different magazines, yeah, but, but that's the one magazine we use, most of it is internet-based for updating our fuel, there's multiple, um, websites for tracking, A O P A is one of them, um, yep, um, there's Flight Following, there's Fuel dot com, there's, there's multiple ones that, that we are subscribed to, and that they call us, and, and every two weeks they're looking at updates. So all of those websites that the pilots are using to check fuel pricing, availability of vehicles, that kind of stuff, all that is, is listed and updated every two weeks. And, uh, most of it, well, really all of it now, is by phone call, rather than updating the computer, because we can sit at home with a computer for an hour and a half updating all those websites, or the way we have it with them, you know, it's in their benefit as well to update these sites, so they're calling us and spending that time updating these computers.
Well, you and I counted on that one one site, when I went and looked, it was, you hadn't updated, but you just provided the information that was automatically updated by whoever that ran it against, so...
Yeah, and they feed off of each other with the updates, a lot of those websites do, so, I mean, they're, they're constantly being updated.
Now, on the promotion of the airport, I was thinking about the port coming for trips, and said fly into the airport, Lake County, that's over and above just promoting the airport, just promoting the county itself.
Yeah, and I think, I, I, the fact that the people we're drawing in from Idaho and California right now, you know, they're bringing others with them, they're staying in town, they're spending money at hotels, restaurants, this kind of stuff. Right now with the project, we've got, we've got three other people here full-time, living in town, you know, and spending their money here, for at least three months, if not six right now, so, I'd say promoting more than just the airport, we've got the interest of the county in mind too, because we're drawing people in that are staying here, eating here, and, you know...
And hunting.
And hunting, yeah. And, and then the, the fly-ins that come in during the summer for camping in, in the Albor Desert, and then this kind of stuff, they come, they stay here, they'll stay a night or two here, fly out to the desert, and then they'll stay another night usually when they come back, so, we, we try to bring in as much as we can there and, and have those people feel welcome in going into town and actually spending the time here.
Okay.
Any more questions, concerns?
It's on the agenda tomorrow for action. I just wanna point out that, uh, I know Tom has went out on the, you know, we're talking about promotion there, promoting the airport, so he also has found a lot of grants for us too, you know, just these little grants here and there that, that were eligible for to apply to, and, like, we, we went out for a couple of grants, we didn't get them, but still, he has been, he comes to me all the time, when David gives this grant, there's this, and he does follow the, uh, you know, the, the state requirements and all that on everything, so he does a really good job, I just wanna say thank you, Tom, because you make my job pretty easy, so thank you, appreciate that also.
On, on grants, writing grants, we've submitted a few applications that haven't received, do you write to grant yourself or do you solicit expertise in grant writing to help?
Well, the Connect dollars, we at W H Pacific's great, we just get information, they kind of do that, but on the, like, we did emergency backup here last spring, last fall, and, and last, last fall, and we did it ourselves, or, or, Tom did it.
Well, normally all of the grants, they come through the office, we go through them, we do everything we can, then we send it to W H Pacific, you know, because of their, their professional organization is used to doing this, and then we allow them to take that grant and make it better.
And they've been, they've been great, they, they're very supportive, even some of the things that they're not even involved with, if they know, they help us tremendously, W H Pacific, so...
Excellent.
They're, they're excellent firm to work with, they've been really supporting Lake County, they've helped us where we didn't, you know, our expertise, where we didn't even know, so, for their expertise, so...
So, so one thing that's not really said is this contract with Tom, we get through people, Tom, Julie, and John, if you got to, yeah, if you very highly count...
Well, it's got a require, it's got requirements to be, that's, we not only get those three, but we get anybody else who needs to put on, to need to record this in the contract, so, yeah, so...
Yeah, and right now, we're, we're sitting at seven people, six full-time people out there right now, and, and that'll be for six months, and then one part-time person on the weekends who's coming in from Climate Falls, staying here, and helping us get this, this aircraft down, so, so it's, if I remember right, for every job provided here, it's a hundred in Portland, correct?
Yeah.
So...
Is it a hundred or is it three hundred?
Well, we'll just...
The other day I heard Portland, so it's...
But, you know, so even if it's a six-month at a time, it's an injection right now, but it's, it's helping, and, I mean, I'm excited to see at this point that we're there, you know, that we're getting to where we can bring in those people in and they can, well, they should sustain and make a living.
And once you get this particular machine up and going and, and signed off on it, it's a hundred percent, you'll probably just get a steady stream, and so you'll have ongoing employment to...
Yeah, well, the plan right now is to market these, once we get the first one done, the approval should be done, the first flight should...
What media, can you say what that project is?
Yeah, we're, we're working on a Sikorsky Blackhawk, it's a U H sixty military Blackhawk that we've converted to a firefighting, uh, logging helicopter, and, uh, we're in the process of getting the final approval with the FAA right now, we're making that happen and owning the type certificate for that aircraft, which gives us the ability to basically be the same as manufactured, we're just taking a pre-manufactured aircraft, we're putting it into a civilian category, and then turning around and being able to resell that.
So can you market that with the aforementioned Eclipse, where it's two Eclipse?
Or an area view of the Eclipse.
Okay.
But we, we need to keep separation for the audience, that there's two, two things going on at the airport, one is a contract with you as far as airport manager, and the other thing, Blackhawk, that's your personal business.
Personal business, yes.
So when you come, you need a larger hanger for your personal business when you come to build one.
We're actually, we're actually talking about that right now, the owner of the aircraft and myself are talking about that, if, if this goes the way we want it to, and the marketing happens, I was just telling Dave this this morning, what, what we'd like to see happen is a larger hanger than what we have right now, probably a hundred by, a hundred by a hundred hanger for the, for our aircraft, and that would open up the current hanger that we're in now to be leased out to private general aviation owners, so that would push, that would house a three for sure, probably four aircraft comfortably, and that would all be coming in as income to the county at that point, and, yeah, yeah.
And then just a, little quick update, and I'll let Tom give that with the Connect, like we were talking about, we did just take the second one, uh, well, go ahead.
Our Connect grant, yeah, we're, today we're having our pre-construction meeting for the Connect Six project, for the, the taxiways in Rhode Island Beacon, um, so we'll have all that information rolling, uh, this year we'll have the engineering done, and early two thousand eighteen we'll be starting construction on that Connect Six project.
So I, I wasn't aware that you were having that today, but with that said, can you, we can make a note on tomorrow's agenda for you to give us an update on the meeting today?
Yeah, yeah.
If you would.
Yeah, we can do that.
We'll move.
Yeah, it, it was kind of, kind of a quick thing, it just got thrown together here with W H Pacific, so.
Okay.
But we wanted to make you aware of it, that it is gonna happen today, the pre-constructions, just gonna be over the phone, and, and in the passage, and Dave come down and travel, but this year we're doing it over the phone.
Good.
Incoming Jericho, Skype.
There you go, yeah.
So, I anticipate hopefully that there's the Connect Oregon seven, but you don't have any projects that you'll be applying for on the next Connect, as you're aware of, or is there?
There's the rest of our, our process with the, our master plan, the next thing in line really is the parallel taxiway, which is two thousand nineteen, so it's not too far behind, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one, if I remember right, is.
What kind of cost is that, what'll cost?
It's, I don't have a total cost, but it's, it's gonna be hard, because that's a, that's the.
So we save up the F A A dollars for the matches, I had that.
Now, we're talking about the parallel, on the east side of the May, we're with Roderick, one hangar.
With Roderick, yes.
That's been in play for a long time.
So, so I'm gonna suggest here, we're, you know, always pretty liberal with our meetings, but I think we're way beyond some of the discussions for today.
Okay.
Looking forward to an update tomorrow.
And one last quick question. M N F service for the pilots come in, that's, is provided?
Yes.
To the county?
Yeah.
And it's working well?
It's full wireless, yeah, and it works just fine, yep, we're, we pulled everything out of the, the back office now, that room, just in final paint for the sleeping quarters, so, there will be a short time here where there will not be a weather computer up front until we get the wiring rerouted, but that's, they still have wireless full-time, almost everybody brings in their iPad or their iPhone, and, and uses that, and so all that's accessible, if we're there, and somebody needs a computer, we'll get them set up, put it out there, okay?
General is gonna find that.
Dave, you're gonna have, you're gonna have some more things, I know, but I'm gonna ask for a small, short break here, take about a five minutes, six, five to ten more.
Yeah.